So I think we're at 5:31, so should we get started? And so I'll call to order the September 22nd, 2020 Affordable Housing and Homelessness. We're not really a subcommittee anymore, but meeting. One of the liaisons, Mayor Jeff Kors, with Mayor Pro Tem Christie Holstage. We will turn it over, Jay, to introduce our presentation. We'll do public comment and council member comments after the presentation. So everyone get as much information as possible before they want to ask questions and make comment. If the group isn't too big, we can have this more as a discussion, which is what we'd like to do. As long as everyone's respectful of not speaking on and on. That way, everyone could share their input and get questions they have answered. So with that, turn it over to our Economic Development Director, Jay Barata.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of today's meeting is essentially to hear from West Hollywood Community Housing Corporation on their proposed project at the southwest corner of Stevens and Palm Canyon Drive. Today, we have President, CEO of West Hollywood Community Housing Corporation, Jesse Slansky, Director of Real Estate Development, Matt Mason, the project architect, Will, and Will, I'm missing your last name here, forgive me, and from Desert AIDS Project, Carl Baker. And with that, why don't I go on and just hand it over to Matt and Jesse to get the presentation started? We do have a number of slides. There will be an opportunity for questions and answers after the presentation. And we also received a number of comments from community members, which we can do during the public comment question and answer phase. Okay, Jesse?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kors, Mayor Pro Tem Holstage, city staff, Palm Springs community. Thank you so much for having us this evening. My name's Jesse Slansky. I'm the President and CEO of West Hollywood Community Housing Corporation. On behalf of our board and our staff, we are so excited tonight to present you with Agave at Palm Canyon. Tonight, I'm going to spend a few minutes giving you a very brief overview of WHCHC, our history, and how we transform lives. I'll then turn things over to Matt Mason, our Director of Real Estate Development, who will give you an overview of the project, and Will Carson from 64 North, our architect, who will go into more detail on the architecture and design. Then we will introduce our partners at Desert AIDS Project, who will be providing supportive services onsite. Carl Baker, their Director of Legal and Legislative Affairs, is here with us. And then we'll open it up for any questions. So to start, some background on West Hollywood Community Housing Corporation. We're a nonprofit organization. We have been creating high-quality affordable housing for 34 years. We transform the lives of low-income individuals and families. We began in West Hollywood and over the years have expanded throughout LA County. Our buildings are not your typical affordable housing projects. We specialize in developing in affluent areas with vocal and active constituencies. Our award-winning approach to design means our apartment communities are both beautiful and functional. We like to say we build our buildings for our residents and our neighbors. Our properties fit seamlessly into the neighborhood. We look forward to continuing this tradition here in Palm Springs. Our mission is building homes and providing services that move community members from insecurity to stability. Our values of quality and integrity resonate through everything we do, the affordable housing we build, and the critical support services we provide. We began by providing affordable homes for seniors and those with special needs. In the early 1990s, we created one of the first affordable apartment communities on the West Coast, specifically serving people with HIV and AIDS. Gradually, we expanded the populations we serve to include low-income individuals and families, those living with mental and physical disabilities, the formerly homeless, transition age youth, and an emerging population of transgender individuals. Today, we house over 900 residents in 574 units in 17 buildings in three cities. We have six projects in development. Our newest property, Rampart Mint, will open next month and welcome 22 residents home. As we all know, California is experiencing a housing crisis. We are part of the solution. Homes prevent homelessness. Without WHCHC, people would be forced to live in substandard housing, overcrowded housing, or be so severely rent burdened, they would no money for anything else. As an example of the need, earlier this year, we opened Westmore Linden, 93 units of affordable housing for low-income seniors. For those 93 units, we received over 1,000 applications. What differentiates us from other affordable housing providers is our commitment to resident services. We know that housing alone is not enough. Our buildings house people, and our support services keep them housed. Our housing is designed for people who can live independently. But we realized early on that some of our more vulnerable residents were struggling to live on their own. Our Resident Services Department grew organically to respond to this need. Our full-time onsite professional staff assess resident needs and link them to critical resources. This support is what keeps vulnerable residents housed stably and successfully. And more on that in a little bit. But now I'll turn it over to Matt and Will to introduce Agave at Palm Canyon.
Hello, my name is Matt Mason. I'm the Director of Real Estate Development for West Hollywood Community Housing Corporation. I'm going to briefly describe our proposed project before our architect, Will Carson, from 64 North speaks in detail to the project's proposed design. With this project, like all of our projects, we want to make sure that our future residents are proud of where they live and proud to call the building home. And we also want to make sure that our future neighbors are proud to be neighbors to our buildings because we build and we stay in the neighborhoods in which we build. We don't just build and sell our buildings. We build and invest in the communities in which we build. All of our projects are affordable and include housing covenants that keep them affordable for a minimum of 55 years. Agave at Palm Canyon will be a 100% senior building for residents aged 62 and greater. The project will comprise 71 one-bedroom units, which will include two managers' units for full-time onsite building managers, one-day manager and one-night manager as well. The remaining 69 one-bedroom units will be for low-income seniors at a range of income levels ranging all the way down to 20% and then up to 80% of the area median income. So that translates to approximately 10,000 at the lower end to 40,000 at the 80% level for Riverside County. And those are income levels that are defined by HUD and specific to the county level. So these are Riverside County numbers. Residents would pay approximately 30% of their income in rent, which in this case would translate to about $250 up to about $1,000 for a one-bedroom. As I mentioned, all of the units are for seniors. Some of the units will be further set aside for seniors with special needs, which could include a diagnosis of HIV or could be a senior who does not currently have a home. We will provide full-time onsite services tailored to the needs of all of our residents, including specialized services or special needs. So Agave at Palm Canyon will feature a number of amenities onsite for our residents. There will be a community room with the demonstration kitchen, which we like to include so that you can put on cooking classes. This is an example from our recent Westmore Linden building, which opened earlier this year, a low-income senior building in the city of Los Angeles. Agave at Palm Canyon will also include a computer room slash lending library and a fitness room or a gym to help our residents stay in shape, as well as a spacious laundry room for the residents. There will be well landscaped outdoor open space. The building will feature lush desert-appropriate landscaping surrounding the project and in the private outdoor open space that the residents will share for passive recreational uses. The Palm Canyon Drive frontage will feature an office for the building manager next to the building's front door. Again, we will have a date manager and a night manager living onsite and monitoring the front door from their office. This is for the security of our residents as well as the security of the neighborhood as the managers will provide full-time eyes on the street. The building will also feature security cameras and a professional security monitoring service to supplement the security of the building. We will also include multiple offices for full-time onsite service provision, which will include services from Desert AIDS Project, a solid community housing corporation, and potentially specialized services from Riverside University Health Systems, special needs. Offices and resident amenities will be located along Palm Canyon Drive and will be designed to activate the streetscape and to allow passive interaction between our senior residents and activity along the street. So WHCHC has decades of experience working with the community throughout the development process. Our community engagement team has already been meeting with area residents, neighborhood associations, and adjacent property owners to provide an overview of this project and to gather feedback and input. To date, the team has had very productive conversations and email exchanges with residents of the surrounding neighborhood of Old Las Palmas and nearby neighborhoods of Vista Las Palmas, Vista Norte, and Little Puskin as well. The team has also received input from the project's most direct neighbor at Pompei de Las Palmas, the building adjacent to the project site. And we will continue the community engagement throughout the development process. And now, Will, we'll talk more about the site and the building.
Great, Matt, thanks. So my name is Will Carson. I'm the Design Director at 64 North. We're the architect for the project. We're very excited to be involved in this important project for Palm Springs and its citizens. Wanted to take a quick moment and offer a bit of background on 64 North as it relates to the project. We are a multidisciplinary design studio, and I've been fortunate to have been designing architecture, in particular affordable housing projects such as these for the past two decades. You can see a range of these here on slide. We pride ourselves in creating buildings and landscapes that are both exceptional and modern and are a service both to their inhabitants and also the communities that they're placed in. And this includes multiple projects that we have in design now with WHCHC. You can see one here on the bottom, the mirror mark gold. I've also spent a good amount of time myself in Palm Springs with my family over the last 20 years, in this particular neighborhood, actually. So when WHCHC reached out to us about this project, we were, of course, very excited to be involved. All right, next slide, please. As you know, Palm Springs has such an important legacy of both residential and civic architecture, stretching back from architects like Richard Neutra and Frey to the modern day. Our goal with this project is to create a worthy contemporary addition to this important legacy. So we also feel this project has the potential to make an important contribution to the city on an urban level. You know, here we are in the aerial. The site is on the kind of upper left there with the cyan outline along Palm Canyon as it stretches from downtown to the north. And, you know, it's a way we think that this project can also stitch together a void in the life of the city. And, thank you, Matt. You know, the site as it exists now is empty. It really is a void in the city fabric. And it's a way to create, the project is a way to create vitality along Palm Canyon. Somebody's got an alarm outside. And also to stitch together the life of downtown with projects to the north and the life of the city to the north, and also do so respectfully with the neighborhoods here to the west. That'll stop here in a minute. So here you can see the project is at front Palm Canyon. We are looking west towards the mountains. It's 71 one-bedroom units are arrayed in such a way to minimize its mass over just two stories. The plate height of the upper level is at 22 feet, and the sloped roofs rise up to about 30 feet on the C1 parcel here on the front and 24 feet on the R2 parcel to the rear. Here along Palm Canyon, you can also see we've arrayed those community-oriented active spaces that Matt talked about with their floor-to-ceiling glazing in relationship to the street with this broad steps and patio and landscape adjacent to the street. Next slide. Overall, the design palette for the project is very much in keeping with the modernist language of Palm Springs with low-slung angled roofs and broad trellises and eaves to give us lots of shade, shaped and patterned wall surfaces that you see in the neighborhood. As the sun comes across, they are animated by the shadow that gets created, warm wood surfaces, and lots of spaces that blur those connections between inside and out when the months are tempered enough to allow that. Here you can see the site plan for the project. North is to the left, and Palm Canyon is along the top. Community spaces are those larger spaces on the upper left, including at the corner. And units each have their own balcony and patio arrayed in groups, and they're interspersed with some kind of these gray spaces, which are gardens and courtyards, which help break down the mass and also provide spaces for folks to get in and out of their units. And parking for each unit, we're providing 72 parking spaces in total. The parking is arrayed along the western edge of the site. And that helps provide a natural kind of buffer between this two-story structure and our one-story neighbors to the west. And so the building there, like in the middle of the project, is set back approximately 72 feet from the property line, which is, you know, well more than the 20 feet that would be required. And per request, we are including a five-foot landscape buffer along that edge as well. All right, next slide. And so, you know, talking about landscape, we at 64 North design landscape in addition to architecture. And landscape is very much an equal partner in how we've thought about the project in relationship to the architecture. The project includes a lush drought-tolerant landscape, which is very much at home in the desert and is really about creating a kind of expressive color and an expressive form and is obviously designed to minimize water use. Next slide. And, you know, the palette includes cacti, agave, palaverades, and of course palms. And, you know, in the landscape, as we have with the building, we're really seeking to create an exceptional place to live, an exceptional place to relax and be at home. All right, Jesse?
Thanks, Will. So now I'm going to talk a little bit about the timeline and then the resident services. So our timeline, in September 2020, we started public outreach and neighborhood meetings. In January 2021, we expect approval of the entitlements. In March, we'll apply to the state of California's multifamily housing program for gap financing. In the summer, we'll apply to the state again for 4% low-income housing tax credits. And then construction will start early in 2022, and it'll take about 18 months to complete. Okay, next slide, resident services. And as I mentioned earlier, we integrate resident services with affordable housing because low-income and other vulnerable individuals can face special challenges to maintain their housing. Our staff of professional resident services coordinators facilitate the mental, emotional, and physical well-being of our residents through one-on-one assessments, individualized service plans, and linkages to resources such as physical and mental health care, transportation, food, and other benefits. In addition, we offer lifelong learning workshops, cultural enrichment programs, and community building events. These life-enhancing services support independent living and successful aging in place. Our services are voluntary, offered onsite to the greatest extent possible, and always free of charge. We are pleased to be partnering with Desert AIDS Project, who will also provide services at Agave at Palm Canyon. I'd like to hand it off now to Carl Baker, who's here with us to talk about the services that Desert AIDS Project provides.
Thank you, Jesse. Hi, my name is Carl Baker. I'm Director of Legal and Legislative Affairs at Desert AIDS Project. Many of you know about DAP. And our partnership with West Hollywood Community Housing is to bring a full-time or part-time community case manager to be onsite in some of those front-facing rooms that were illustrated earlier. The case manager works with the residents regardless of whatever their needs are, whether it be helping them with social security or if there's some hiccup in any of their payments. Our trained service members are there or whatever their needs are. Basically, they'll coordinate delivery of medical and social services. If there's need for food pantry or anything like that, they have all the resources, not only in Palm Springs, but with Riverside County, also tying into the county's mental health franchise if they need any help in that area. We also will provide any services for medical, dental, behavioral health, and social services at DAP, which is located less than a mile and a half away. They also serve as a case management team to participate in things going on inside Agave. So working with residents on their diets with the demonstration kitchen. We also provide dietitian services and training in anything that they would need in that regard. Lastly, they recommend any social services throughout the county and help the neighbors and help the residents in any way possible. Thanks, Jesse.
Thank you. So Jay, I think we're going to toss it back to you to take any questions or council member comments.
Yeah, and so thank you, everyone, for the presentation. It's really appreciated. And I think what Mayor Pro Tem Holstage and I are thinking, there are 44 people on this, so we'd like to let this be, you know, a little more free-form than a normal two- to three-minute public comment. So I think the best thing is if people can, Jay, since you're controlling the meeting, raise their hands to ask a question. And then if there are chats, maybe, Jay, you can go through those. And just, I ask everyone so we can get through everyone's comments and questions and have it more of a discussion with the folks from West Hollywood and from DAP to try and keep your comments limited. But we want to give you the opportunity to comment and have your questions answered.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, would you like me to go through some of the public comments we received earlier prior to the meeting?
Sure, you can post those if that's...
Okay, why don't we do that?
Helpful, so everyone could read because there are answers to those in a written document.
Right. Okay. First question then is Jenny Wiseman. Okay, Jenny?
Hi, Jay. Thank you. It's good to see you and the mayor and your pro tem. I'm Jenny Wiseman with New Harmony Habitat. I am developing my own low-cost senior housing community. I've met with the mayor and Jay and the mayor pro tem about it. And I think it's really wonderful what you're doing. I think everything is beautiful. I spent quite a bit of my time in West Hollywood in California when I first moved to California. So we have a little connection there. But anyway, I have a couple of questions. I'm also a nonprofit, and I was wondering if you are a nonprofit. In addition to the state, what is the source of your funding? And what is the cost of this project?
Matt?
So the source of the, we're looking at combined source of funding between HCD from the state and our MHP application. There is a land contribution from the city of Palm Springs. In addition, we will be looking at 4% tax credits, Riverside County gap finance, as well as potential city gap finance.
Okay, and can you share the cost with us or is that provided here?
I, number one, I'm not entirely sure. I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers in front of me.
Okay. Okay, that's fair enough. And your timeline, you feel is about 18 months?
18 months of construction.
That's good. Well, what you've shown us today, I think, is really beautiful. And it's going to be a lovely addition to our community. So I wish you all the best.
Thank you very much. And if you want to contact me, I'd be happy to provide for the...
May I have that permission?
Yes.
Okay.
I can give you my email address now if you'd like.
Okay, well, I'm Jenny Wiseman, and I would love to make a connection with you because my hook for my senior affordable housing, I run an organization called the Pet Ministry, and it's a sanctuary for senior people and pets. And it's built from very low-cost materials and can literally be built in probably four to six months.
Okay, thank you, Jenny.
I'd love to talk to you. Thank you.
All right, the next is Stephen Moses. Stephen, are you...
Steve Fusco, is that what you're looking for?
There was a...
There I am. Hear me now?
Yes.
There we go, Stephen Moses.
You'll be sorry you heard me. My, I am the One PS representative for Old Las Palmas, which is the neighborhood in which you are building. And I'm a resident about 200 yards west of you. The bulk of my career was in affordable housing. And I want to say that this was as fine a presentation as I've heard in all of those years. The organization behind it, I've explored and looked into that, are reputable, fine, talented, and I am excited by the, what's going to happen? That wasn't the question, it was a statement. I'm sorry.
Statements are totally good, too. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you. Deborah Hovel.
I also want to say that I'm very pleased at the visuals of this. I'm curious if you have any apartment floor plans that you could share. Are they all identical? Are there several versions? What is the square footage? What are the amenities inside each apartment?
All right, just had to get myself off mute. So it's probably difficult to see, but if you kind of, if you zoom in with your eyeballs perhaps, you can see that they are all one-bedrooms. And they are all, in fact, identical in terms of their layout. I'm going to give you rough square footage. Let me just do a little takeoff here on my cat while we're talking.
And do you have... Do you have any elevations of the interiors? Are they furnished, unfurnished, wheelchair accessible?
Yes, so they're all designed to what we call the State 11B standard, which is fully accessible, wheelchair accessible from like day one. There's like no conversion necessary or anything. Oh, there you go, we're zooming in. They're about 630 square feet each. That does include a small outdoor patio, which you can see those doors opening onto. It's probably actually a slider and not a double door. And each has a full ADA bathroom, compliant bathroom with a roll-in shower and a reasonably large bedroom, a big walk-in closet with lots of storage, and then a full kitchen with the eat-up counter and a living room that opens up to that patio. On the second floor, those patios become balconies. Yeah, so that's, we don't yet have elevations, but that gives you some idea of what these units are like.
And have you gotten as far as interior finishes, et cetera?
We haven't quite yet. The finishes are typically designed to be, on the one hand, good quality, but on the other, and in addition, very maintenance concerned, given the length of time that this building needs to perform. And so it will be drywall in the interior, it'll probably be a level four, a level five finish. We'll have some color in there. Sorry, you can hear my daughter squealing background. You know, quartz countertops or solid surface countertops and tile in the bathrooms. So a pretty high-level finish, you know, something that you would find in a kind of high-quality apartment.
And what about water use sustainability? Is there been any effort to do passive solar or anything like that?
Yeah, so the building is going to be designed to the LEED gold standard. So I don't know if you're familiar with LEED at all, but that's two steps. There's, you know, four tiers of LEED, and that's the third highest tier of LEED. And so all of the plumbing fixtures, et cetera, in the project will be extremely low, will be low-water use, slow flow, all those kinds of things. The landscape, obviously, is all drought-tolerant. The landscape, landscape obviously is all drought tolerant. There isn't any, you know, there's no ch-ch-ch-ch sprinkler head, you know, no one does those anymore, right? It's all bubblers and drip irrigation. We will be looking at PV potentially over the, there's a kind of shade trellis that it projects out from the project. And it, for instance, shades the parking spaces or half of them. And so there's some really good spots for PV in those, on those areas. We'll also be looking at solar PV and that, or sorry, hot water, solar hot water in addition to PV. And, and then also, you know, the great thing about our California Building Code is that Title 24, which governs energy, has gotten more and more and more strict over the last 20 years. And so any building that's built to building code nowadays is, performs better than the most green buildings of even a decade ago. So.
All good answers. Bravo. Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, next up, we have James Williamson.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for your presentation. It was great. I'm a resident on Stevens Road. I'm the incoming chair of the Old Las Palmas Neighborhood Organization. And for full disclosure, my husband is the mayor. Couple of questions or comments. First of all, Stevens Road is a very wide road. Somewhere back in its history, it actually had pantries and a median down the middle. It makes it quite a difficult road to cross, especially if you have limited mobility. So it, I think there's a conversation there with the city about a median in the middle of the, that they, this, the road to allow your, your residents to cross more safely. And if it comes to the median, that the local neighborhood organization has some, some thoughts and comments on that. Great to hear your comments on security. Within Old Las Palmas Neighborhood Organization, we have a camera system, a security camera system. And one of our host cameras is on the corner of Stevens and Pan Canyon. So working with you to potentially find a place to keep that camera, the neighborhood organization is really interested in. And probably the, the, the number one concern of the neighborhood organization is really, as you spoke about, activating the streetscape and that part of Pan Canyon. As you may know, the town business district starts at La Jolla and runs all the way through Vista Chino. It's been wildly successful over the last five to 10 years. It kind of dies, unfortunately, however, in the area you're talking about. So finding ways to activate that specifically with retail and restaurants really interests us. So if there is opportunity to, for some of your frontage to, to have retail or accommodate restaurant tenants, as a neighborhood organization, we'd be very interested in talking with you about that as well. But to echo everyone else's comments, great presentation and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else have questions or comments? I'm not seeing any other hands. I'm going to go to the chat box. I can read some.
Yeah, there are a couple there, Jay.
Okay. There's a neighbor at Pompei de Las Palmas complimenting the design. Proud to be in the neighbor. Thank you for taking concerns of the community into account. You mentioned the covenant for affordability for 40 years. How long is the commitment that the development be 100% senior? And that it have 24-hour day staffing?
So the commitment will be for, for 55 years, actually for the, for the affordability levels. And those funding sources will all specify that, that this will be a senior project as well. So, so that it, it's a co-terminus sort of commitment of population and, and term of affordability as well. You will be specifying the two building managers in our TCAC application, for example, our tax credit application, which is the biggest financial piece of, of an affordable housing development. And that will be an amenity that they will also hold us to. So it, it's sort of all wrapped together in the regulatory agreement with TCAC. And our commitment to TCAC lasts for 55 years.
And the next question in the chat box was about floor plans. I don't believe we have floor plans available. There's a question about where do we apply for agave housing?
I'll jump in with that one. So about six months before we're ready to open, there will be a lottery process to lease up the units. And we'll market that as far and wide, so everyone's aware. And if you want to provide us with your email information, we'll make sure we gather everyone who's interested in the list now. So it'll be notified of product updates.
Some local affordable housing apartments also include transportation services to places like grocery stores. Is this in the plan for this housing unit as well?
Rack transportation services provided by ourselves, no. But our resident services providers and the case managers from DAP will link people who need transportation to transportation service providers.
Okay. I see that Robert Cole had a question.
Thank you. Great presentation. I'm a neighbor also. This question may be for Jesse or Matt. What will West Hollywood's role be on an ongoing basis in the ownership structure? And is there a tax credit syndicator who will be placing the tax credits with equity investors? And would you also talk to us a little bit about who will be providing property management and leasing services?
Those are great questions. So we are a long-term owner and operator. So we are the, we, we will be the owner and stay the owner in perfect, you know, in perpetuity. We have no plans to, I mean, we, we invest in communities. So, so we will be the long-term owner and owner and operator. Your second question, yes, there will be a tax credit investor who purchases the tax credits and syndicates them. We generally work with nonprofit partners. There are banks, actually there are four, there are nonprofit partners such as National Equity Fund and Enterprise Community Partners, who we have great relationships with. We also work directly with banks sometimes, such as Wells Fargo, the bank, Bank of America, Citibank, Chase. We've worked with all of them and they do direct investments. So it's a little early in the process, so we have not identified a syndicator yet. But we have a lot of experience with working with them and successfully placing the equity. But you asked another question, who is a property manager? Currently, we work with a third-party property management firm called Barker Management or BMI. And they manage all the properties in our portfolio on a day-to-day basis, such as collecting rents, dealing with repairs, maintenance, and everyday, everyday, everyday maintenance and operations.
Thank you.
Another question is, are there handicapped accessible units?
Yes, I mean, I'll, I'll get, let, we'll talk about this more. The answer is yes, we'll comply. There's a certain percentage that's set aside, it's required by the building code. And I'll let, we'll talk in more detail about that. But it's one of our core values to make sure every unit is fully accessible to everybody, no matter what. So our last project, Westmore London, it was 93 units for seniors. Every single unit was fully accessible. So it was not a project for people in wheelchairs, but it didn't matter. It didn't matter whether you were in a wheelchair, whether you weren't in a wheelchair, which unit. Every, every, every unit is accessible and functional and complies with the accessibility codes. We want people to, to age in place and we design, and we design for that. But Will, what is the, if you're still on, what's the required set aside for handicapped facility?
It's 10%, but I, but because it's an, because of an elevator in the building, it actually effectively becomes 100%. And, and, and like you said, it's designed to 11B, which means that every unit is as handicapped accessible as a unit possibly can be. And every unit, there is no difference in, in any of the units in that regard. It also, you know, it makes managing the project easier because you don't have to worry, you know, if somebody has special needs, every unit will address their needs.
Will the units be furnished?
No.
And Matt, I know you touched on the income levels, but the questions come up again. What income levels will there be?
So, am I muted? No, okay. So the income levels will be based on Riverside County average incomes. And we would be looking at a range of incomes from 20%, which is very low income, which is about $10,000 for, for a single person, up to, maybe up to 80% area median income, which would be sort of low to moderate income. And that is about $40,000 for a single person in Riverside County.
Are there washer, dryers in the units?
No, but we will have a laundry room. So we will have a laundry room with nine machines, nine washers and nine dryers, which will be accessible. And we also always like to, to have spacious laundry rooms, but have enough room and tables to fold your laundry while you're in the laundry.
All right, we've got a question from Desert.
Yeah, hi. I have a, a property that abuts right up to the property in the old Pompei building. And I, I'm more concerned about the process by which this came about. But I think it's a great looking building and everything. I just have real concerns about the privacy aspects. And nobody reached out to us as neighbors to talk about it. So I'm just a little concerned that that happened. We, we need to have some sort of privacy. So the question is about how do you guarantee privacy to our balconies?
And I'll start with that. So, and there, there will be a landscape screen. So, okay, first of all, there's, there's a required wall that will be located at the property line, which is six feet tall, which is a solid CMU wall. So that's required in the planning code and that'll, that'll be there. And then there'll be a landscape screen, which will be planted in the five feet adjacent to the wall. And that will grow over time to absolutely be taller than that. And many neighbors don't want that landscape screen to be too high. Perhaps you will actually want it to be higher. And certainly that conversation can be had and we can facilitate that to be as quite high if need be. And then the next thing to note is distance. I think this image in particular isn't particularly helpful because it makes the building look two-thirds as tall as your building and also super close to it. In reality, the, that horizontal line across the middle of it is that, that trellis is about as tall as your roof. And hang on just one second. Hey, Kepler, I'm on, I'm on the call. And so, and the second story is set up from that. And so there's 75 feet of distance between the units and the property line. And I think your, your building is about six, eight feet, I think, off the property line. And so I think we can do a site study, but my guess is that, that it's going to be close to impossible or completely impossible to actually see over the wall into your private, private balconies and our private outdoor areas. And certainly with the landscape screen, we can do a lot to, to make that even better.
I, I think it would be great to have more engagement on it, just to understand that aspect to the development.
Absolutely.
All right. Stephen Moses is, has another question.
Stephen, you're muted.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Some of the neighbors were worried about the height that was planned. And you said the maximum was about 30 feet. How does that compare to the Arrive Hotel that is about a block north of you?
Let me take a quick look. I've been, I've walked by that plenty of times, but I want to check to see how tall they are.
It's, it's two-story.
Yeah, but it has a, yeah, so I would say that, well, I would say a couple of things. Probably total height, they're probably not terribly different. But I, what I think is different about Arrive is that the mass of that hotel is pushed back from the street, right? Because of the pool location. And so it's more proximate to the neighboring residents.
Is this approved? Or is?
What's that?
That wasn't me.
Okay. So, yeah, so I think, my guess would be, my guess would be that they probably built it up to the height limit. And, but the one thing I would say is that you, you can see this a little bit in, in some of the elevations, is that the plate height is only, it's actually only 21 foot eight or 21 foot six. And so, and what's great, well, great about the design is that because we have, you know, parking, which is required, we, and we've located that along the western edge of the site. It really pushes the building quite far back. And then the area of the project that's closer to the, the kind of southwestern part of the site, that area there is only 24 feet. And that's at the very, very top of the pitch roof, right? So the, the top of your unit is only of about 21.
Will my doggy be allowed to walk in the landscaping?
I, Matt, is there a rule on that?
Pardon?
Only his dog.
Okay, yeah, there you go.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Now there are other dogs in the neighborhood. I'm just like.
Yeah, yeah.
They can if they want to. I think it depends on what species of cacti we plant, right?
Exactly.
All right. Another hand raised by Roxanne Lenas.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, awesome. So my name's Roxanne, I'm calling with Coachella Valley Rescue Mission. And I was calling more because it was mentioned that there's case managers during the night and the morning are those property managers. With the seniors living there in this one bedroom, will there be any assistance? Or will there be a cap for high-acuity seniors if they need an IHSS worker that lives in with them? Or just a little bit more need than independently being able to take care of themselves?
So if we do have a high-acuity, high-acuity senior, we do have commitments from the Riverside University Health System to provide additional services for those units. This is a building for independent seniors and that's the, that is the primary population that we expect.
So would you be willing, are you working with the county as far as with permanent supportive housing or rapid rehousing programs that would be able to place clients that they have that are seniors that, you know, are on fixed income?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Comment, appreciative of the thoughtfulness of the presentation, design of the project and the commitment. Okay. The city owns the land. This is another comment. What monetary benefit will they get? Is the land just being donated? And why don't I actually take that question? It's important to point out that one of these parcels is actually a former redevelopment agency parcel. And when redevelopment was dissolved in 2012, 2011, the rules were that the properties had to be sold for fair market value. And those sales proceeds returned to all the other taxing entities. such as school districts and the county. So for one property, the developer here is required to buy it. On the other property, it is a city-owned property, and we are looking... That could very well be a contribution of that property as a city's contribution to the project to help make the project more feasible.
And Jay, if I can just add briefly, and thank you for that. And those all will be part of negotiations with the developer on this. On other projects we've done, the city has donated money or donated land. That's typical in these projects. Every city has a requirement to build a certain number of low-income housing under state law, and those numbers are going up considerably. And one of the benefits that comes with the city being part of it is, although we can't limit this to Palm Springs residents, we could work with them on preference for Palm Springs residents as a partner in this. And it provides a tremendous value for our residents. But those details aren't finalized. When they will, they will come to council in a public meeting. Any final decisions on these matters?
And just to answer one of these questions, yes, this meeting is being recorded. It will not necessarily be emailed out to everyone, but it will be posted on our website. So keep an eye open for for the Affordable Housing and Homelessness liaison meetings. And this would be posted in that group of meetings. All right. Next comment is thanking the presenters for a very professional presentation for a worthy population. They've lived in West Hollywood and Hollywood for 25 years. They're familiar with West Hollywood Community Housing Corporation's reputation and beautiful additions to those areas. Looks like the question is, are there any thoughts or comments on other senior projects going into our community, such as Ivy Palm, Live Out and Live Out on Tocqueens, another project on Indian Canyon near Racket Club? Also, I'm sure it's a liability issue, but no pool or spa in Palm Springs. What is the anticipated move-in and grand opening date? So quite a few questions.
I'll see if I can remember all the questions. So the need for affordable housing in California is overwhelming. So we always support affordable housing, no matter where, no matter where it is. In regard to a pool, they hit the nail on the head. It is a liability issue. We generally don't put pools or spas in our properties. Unfortunately, as you know, this is a very litigious country, and it's just... Especially given our target population, it's with high needs and special needs and mobility issues. It's just, we don't, we don't put pools and spas. But we do definitely have air conditioning that works incredibly well and is incredibly energy-efficient. And we have that in all of our properties. What's the anticipated move-in date? It would be most likely winter of 2023.
And are residents allowed to have pets?
Absolutely.
Right. And I believe the mayor addressed this. Will Palm Springs residents have priority? Mayor, would you like to reiterate your comments?
Yeah, we already had that conversation. We're gonna work with them to do that, to the extent we're allowed to by the law.
Thank you. And will the parking area be covered with a roof structure?
So the parking spaces on the north side of the, sorry, no, on the east side of the parking drive do have the trellis that's part of the building extend over them. And then the parking spaces that are further west, those will be shaded somewhat by shade, by the trees, by shade trees. So more than 50% of the total spaces will be shaded, which will exceed the city requirements.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Please raise your hand or post them in the chat box. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, I believe that's it for the public comment section.
Great, thank you. Mayor Protem Holstich, do you have any questions or comments?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to make sure, Jay, did you answer this question that just came in this minute? It says paid staff on site. Did you respond to that?
Employees would be hired, is the question. And preference for qualified tenants or the county's low-income residents at the Ivy Palm?
So there will, they will most likely be... So there will be two resident managers who are employees. We will have most likely one to two full-time service coordinators between West Hollywood Community Housing and Desert Aids Project. And then there will be lots of ancillary jobs because of maintenance and landscaping and all the other things that go into operating a building. So it's at least four full-time employees, but likely many more. Would preference be given to qualified tenants? Sometimes we don't do that universally, but we definitely have resident managers who income qualify as our actual managers. And county's loan residents of the Ivy Palm, we... That is unlikely, because the resident managers need to live at our building. So they're employees and residents of our property.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that all the comments and questions got answered. And thank you for all of that information. Thank you to all the public comments. It's really excellent questions. Really glad that we could have this meeting to get the community's answers. So it's good to share this information ahead of time in the process. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want to start with comments, and then I'll follow you.
Sure. And I wear a couple hats on this as one of the liaisons, of course. I live on Stevens, about 300 yards from this. And I represent the district this is in, as well as live in the neighborhood it's in. And first, I really want to thank you all for the presentation. And starting the outreach even before the first outreach meeting is really appreciated. This is the start of the process, just so the public knows. This is just the start of the process. And West Hollywood Group has been very open to meeting with any, anyone in a small meeting, where they can really talk to neighbors and residents who have questions. And they make themselves available and continue to do so. So if people have more questions later, we'll make sure we have that contact information with our outreach team so we can get those answered. And one of the, I don't know if this came up, when the neighborhood rep, who is my husband, was talking about things that they're interested in. But one thing I have heard from several residents, which I mentioned to the group prior to this, is including a monument sign for the neighborhood, where they're looking to put one on that site with the city. So I'm just reminding, just mentioning it. You don't need to answer it now. But when you're, you know, working with the neighborhood group, if there's a good spot for that, that would make sense. Since that was something they were looking at before, I just didn't want that to get fall off the list. And I just really appreciate the outreach. I think, you know, the neighbors have been really receptive to this. Really good to see this, in my view, in my neighborhood. You know, as I look at projects, I always look at what I want, you know, this in my neighborhood as I vote. And the answer is yes, this kind of project. Obviously, I'll wait till we have the final details and agreements. But I just think it's so important right now that we are adding affordable housing. I think with COVID, we're going to see more and more people in need. Palm Springs has 40% of our residents will qualify as far as age, if not income. And so there's a lot of need for this type of housing here. And I'm really glad to see projects starting to move forward again in affordable housing and affordable housing for seniors. So thank you for the presentation. I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem Holstich.
Thank you. You know, I think this is an excellent start to your process. Thank you for holding it for our community and for neighbors and residents who care about this issue. I know we had the Ivy Palm, we had a different affordable housing meeting earlier this week. I was a little nervous how this one would go, because we heard a lot of comments there. But I think that you presented a beautiful project, as the mayor said. We need affordable housing in the city of Palm Springs. We have a legal requirement to build hundreds of more units before 2021 and thousands of more units in the next four years. And so we're appreciative for excellent affordable housing developers, nonprofit developers, who just do this to serve our community and provide housing to our low-income residents. We're grateful for you to come to Palm Springs and want to do a project here. And I look forward to all the community outreach that you'll do. You know, our residents are experts about their neighborhoods. And we always have really good feedback in this process about roads and traffic and pedestrian access. So I know that you'll listen closely to the neighbors on those issues. And hopefully, we can end up with a beautiful, well-designed project as we move forward in the process and negotiating it, but that could house so many of our residents who really are in need. And I know we'll need more and more affordable housing because of the pandemic and the economic crisis. So thank you all so much for your work, and we're looking forward to moving forward in this process with you.
Great. And the last thing, just if, you can put back on the schedule, so just people have that. And just so you know, so entitlement approval won't be until January. So the next few months, as there's outreach, if you have questions, it's a great time to do that. And, you know, I know both Mayor Protem Holstich and I, when it's helpful, are happy to be on calls or meetings with neighborhood organizations or others, with the folks involved, with both the AP and the West Hollywood Housing Corporation, to hear that kind of input and make sure we have all that to present to council when this comes to council. So please don't hesitate to reach out. And I know that Jesse, someone shared, if you're interested in potentially living here down the road, you can submit your email, and you can send those, I guess, to Jay probably, who can forward them. Or, and we can have the right email that you want us to have for contact. So let us have that, and we'll make sure we include that on the website, so folks know who to reach out to directly. And if there's nothing else, thank you, everyone. Enjoy the evening. We're now in the red stage, so you actually can go out more. And the numbers are getting better, so it's sort of a nice, nice to be able to say that. But please stay safe and follow the rules, so we continue to move further down the chain in this pandemic and keep everyone safe and healthy. So thanks, everyone, and have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jesse. Will, Matt, Carl.
Thanks, Jay.